Good afternoon, council staff and welcome. And we have quite a bit to cover today, so let's get almost the working session at this time. I'll go to the clerk to identify any items to add or delete. Madam clerk?
There are no items to add or delete.
Thank you. Mover and second about the agenda for the committee of the whole working session held in August 19, 2021. Be concerned that certainly a move by Custer Poser, second comes from Clarence, all in favor? Thank you. If you have a procuring interest, you can say it now or invite it. Our first delegation is Craig Benz from Hempson Consultant. Mr. Benning, we all have known Mr. Benning for quite some time, so Simon has, oh, there you are, Craig. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, with all due respect, would you mind if I gave us an introduction to the to the day before we go to Mr. Benning?
I appreciate that, Laurie, please.
All right. Thank you, council, and good afternoon, council and everyone listening. And so I will share my screen. I think you should be seeing hopefully what I'm seeing, a nice big picture of New Tech Finance Working Session. And I'll go to the next slide. So the agenda for today is I'd like to take a few minutes to talk about strategic planning and leadership, because that ties in nicely to the whole concept of financial planning. It'll set the framework for us and hopefully give us some inspiration as to, you know, what our duties and responsibilities are and help us keep with the focus of what's best for our community. I thought it was an interesting picture to start the meeting off with the puzzle and the financial planning, because I'll tell you, I think this afternoon, you'll find there's a lot of moving pieces to the town of New Tecumseh. And certainly no one right direction or one right answer. And this is why we're here today is to have an opportunity to collaborate and discuss. And, you know, have some information provided to us so we can make good decisions for the town moving forward. And so I thought a puzzle was was appropriate. Also, the theme today, I want it to be very casual and relaxed, as much as a council meeting can be. But I do want to encourage a lot of dialogue amongst the council so that, you know, when we leave this this day, staff will like to be informed as to some of the directions council see, the culture that council wants to perform, and the commitment to the strategic plan that we've committed to. So after my brief introduction, we will get to Mr. Benning of Hempson. And then we're going to get to Arun Chalil, the manager of the asset management team. And then I'll give you some insight into the long range financial plan, hopefully tying the pieces of the puzzle together. We also have on the agenda the transit service to discuss some of the options that we would like to include in the 2022 upcoming budget. And I'd like an opportunity to clean up some of the old outstanding capital projects. So without further ado, we'll jump into this. So we're really actually in a very exciting time at the town, because the corporate services group has been able to tie in an asset management plan hot off the press. So very current using, you know, good technology. So we've invested a lot of time in identifying an inventory of our assets. What we need to invest more time in is in the condition of those assets, but Arun will talk more details about that shortly. We also have the development charge study, which is also current hot off the press, and certainly something that council will need to review and recommend for continuation before the end of the day. And then we have the long range financial plan, and you can see the three of them tie in very closely together. And that was a result of a lot of collaboration. And I'm very proud of the the staff at New Tecumseh, because they are a very collaborative group. And everyone is committed to the data and the information that we're using, and we're all in sync. And you're not going to hear, we may not ever be as this in sync again, because these are all brand new plans and policies and procedures. But right now, what's in the DC plan is in the long term financial plan and is in the asset management plan and vice versa. So I'll just give you the strategic plan framework. Today, we're going to be talking about long range financial plans, which you can see is at the top and certainly under the area of council. And and, you know, we rely on council to provide that information for us so we can go away and do the more detailed planning below, which we call organizational plans or business plans or the budget. And from a timeline perspective, long term financial plan today, I would have liked to have been able to present that to you in the spring and on an ongoing basis. We're targeting June, and it won't be so close to the budget cycle. But because of all the moving pieces this time, it took us a little longer to get where we wanted to go. But you're going to see the long term financial plan during the conversations that we hear. Staff will leverage that information and and go away and develop a draft 2022 budget. And then once the budget's approved, and we like to target that completion of the budget by before the end of the year, because it gives staff the opportunity to truly be aggressive in trying to start our projects on a timely basis in the new year. And then we turn that into individual performance plans for each of our departments and each of our staff. So we're closely monitoring what council actually has initiated through the beginning of the exercise. I just wanted to take a moment. I won't go through a lot of detail, but just to refresh everybody's memory about the strategic plan, it's been a while now. So these are the the four pillars that we're staying committed to. The first one, economic vitality. So you'll see a conversation about that quite a bit today, because, you know, the economic vitality and the balance between industrial and urban and rural areas, that will be part of the discussion in the DC study. It's part of the discussion in, you know, the service levels within the asset management plan. We also have, you know, we've recently done a CIP plan, which will, you know, assist in that area as well. And it's an important area when we have our conversation about water allocation and water capacity. The second pillar, good governance, develop a unified town comprised of strong and active communities. I think that's very important as well, that we remember that unlimited set of resources, and we have to make good choices and and we try to make choices that will provide the community with the best outcome. And I just remind everyone that, you know, we have three very unique and vibrant communities. But really, we're representing New Tecumseh, and we have to make decisions that are in the best interest of the broader group of people. The third area, community engagement, improve community engagement and enhance customer service. So areas that I can point out is the whole concept of online and remote access to the building. We're definitely investing in online products in order to facilitate interaction with the residents. And I think the other area that we might consider in that pillar is the demographics, and who are we trying to serve and and who, what market is out there? Who can benefit from us? And communications is important as well. We have some high profile projects, and it's important that our residents understand them and and understand where they came from. Excuse me. Environmental sustainability, you know, we're committed to that. I thought it was interesting in my research of doing this presentation today. I came across an area where forestry was being committed $500,000 a year. Excuse me again. And 500,000 is a lot of money. So when I see that kind of money, I I ask a few details. Well, how could we be spending 500,000 on forestry? Seems like a lot. And are we committed to that? Will that be an ongoing project? And for the next couple of years, it will be. But one of the primary areas it's focused on is the, I'm never get this right, the Emerald Ashore challenges. And we've committed a lot of resources to that area to to ensure that we're safe in that in that world. I'm almost finished, and I hope this works. I'm trying. Doing multi-technology right now. But I wanted to just present a very small vignette, 25 seconds or so, of a little component that this Sheila Watt Cloutier presented in the most recent on Monday at the AMO conference. She was the keynote speaker at the AMO conference. And, you know, she has a very impressive background. No, oh, look, and I've written Nobel Peach Prize, no, Nobel Peace Prize. And she's renowned for climate change, human rights. She's the officer of the Order of Canada Aboriginal Achievement Awards. She did TED Talks, and she's the author of a book called The Right to be Cold. So she, in her, you know, her keynote speech, I took a small snippet out of there that I thought was very appropriate to introduce today's working session. And it's a little snippet on leadership, so I'm hoping that this goes fairly smoothly, but bear with me just for a moment.
Speaker Selah Watt Cloutier is sponsored by Ontario Power Generation. I will turn it over to Tracy Primo to introduce.
Oh, thank.
Speaker Selah Watt Cloutier is sponsored by Ontario.
And I'm assuming, council, everyone can see the fellow, the gentleman on the screen, and I'm going to move this directly along to Sheila and to the section I'd like you to listen to. And her topic was on leadership. Or her.
Yes, of course, I have this specific question for you. So they asked me if I could find somebody to video graph me, take me. And I said, yes, of course, I would. The question that they had was, what does leadership mean to you? And this was my response on the tape to them. Leadership, to me, means never to lose sight of the fact that the issues at hand are so much bigger than oneself. And leadership is about working from a principle and ethical place within oneself. And it is to model authentically, genuinely for others, a sense of calm, a sense of clarity, and a sense of focus. And leadership is to always check inwards to ensure one is leading from a position of strength, not victimhood, not fear, so one does not project one's own limitations onto those you are modeling possibilities for. And so that's, for me, has been an important piece in terms of of trying to relay a message from a place of strength and focus and allowing people to come on side and build those partnerships. Because really, it's to create that way forward, rematch the way forward, that allows for empathy to come through with others, from others.
So I hope you found that just a little bit inspiring. And I thought it was very interesting, her topic on leadership or this conversation about leadership, because it really talked about teams and and how much we can create as a team. And certainly, I feel this way about this long term financial plan that we're presenting. It definitely was done in in strong collaboration with the various groups you're going to hear from today. So having said all that, I'm going to turn over the screen to Mr. Benning of Hempson, and he'll walk you through the development charge background study.
Thank you very much, Laurie. Excellent. Mr. Benny?
Yes, good afternoon. It's a it's a pleasure to be part of your session this afternoon. I think that was an excellent introduction. And what I'm going to do over the next bit is just give you an update on the development charges study that we've been undertaking with staff. And once again, just as Laurie indicated, I want to thank the staff for how much hard work they've put in working on this. It's quite a complex thing, but it also ties in very nicely with the long range financial plan. I believe the clerk and the deputy clerk is going to be running the presentation for me from that end. Very good. Thank you. And so we just go to the next slide. I'll overview what we're going to talk about. It's kind of a dense package, but I'm going to keep it at a high level. I want to talk about the development charges currently there in the town, overview some of the key legislative changes that have occurred over the last couple of years. Talk about the development charge study process. Just remind everybody how we go about doing a development charge studies. I'm going to provide a high level overview of the capital program, and then quickly move in to share with you the rates that we've calculated through this, the draft rates. Compare those with your current rates and also provide some comparisons with neighboring municipalities. And then just talk about where we need to be going over the next couple of months to bring a new bylaw to council for your consideration. So just moving on to the next slide. What are development charges? I think all of you on council are well aware of this. Just a couple of brief points. It is the prime fiscal tool made available to municipalities through provincial legislation to fund what we refer to as the first round of growth related capital costs associated with meeting the increased needs arising from development. In simple terms, what that means is the town is growing. Additional lands are being developed. New residential houses are being constructed and people living in them. New non residential buildings are being built, employees within them. And that all creates an increased demand on municipal services. And you have to expand your capital infrastructure to meet those needs. And this tool is available to you to help fund that first round of capital cost. And that's what we're going to talk about over the coming few minutes. The notion here is that growth should pay for growth and that the financing burden of those expanded costs doesn't place a burden upon your existing ratepayers and taxpayers. So just moving on to the next slide. Just to provide a summary, council last considered development charges back in 2018. Some of you will recall. And it's a very broad based development charge that program that provides for the funding of all of your key services that are eligible for funding on the what we call general services or soft services. It's a library, the fire, police services, and very importantly, parks and recreation, public works, and then general government, which is really growth related studies. And then on the engineering side, which makes up a big chunk of or a large share of the charge, it's the roads and related program, and then the water and wastewater services. The bylaw can last a maximum of five years, so it's actually not set to expire until September of 2023. But on the next slide, I just want to provide for you a few thoughts on why we're taking up doing the update now. So if you can just move to that slide. You may be wondering if it lasts until 2023, why do an update at this time? We had already, even pre pandemic, begun to recognize that there were some significant pressures on the cost of delivering services, namely the roads, the water and the sewer, and the ongoing discussions with Colin Wood with respect to water supply was part of that. And so there's been a significant upward pressure on the construction costs associated especially with those engineering programs. And currently, your development charges rates are not at a level sufficient to fund the growth related capital needs. So even before the pandemic would set in, we had already seen that pressure, and we're examining things as part of the long range financial planning exercise. And then in addition to that, and this is my first bullet point, over the last couple of years, there have been some changes to the development charges legislation and associated growth related funding capital tools. Originally, we were quite concerned from the municipal perspective that the Development Charges Act would be changed in such a way that it really limited our ability to fund growth related capital. Fortunately, associations such as AMO, the Municipal Finance Offices Association, and municipalities were effective in showing the province that this is an important tool to reinforce our ability to fund development related infrastructure. So the changes to the Development Charges Act, in my opinion, are largely to the benefit of municipalities. One of the key things that was changed, some of you will recall this, is that for our general services in a particular library, recs and parks facilities, we could only fund 90% of the growth related costs. There was a 10% discount or copayment that has now been removed. So one of the things we want to do through this update is capture that ability to fund 100% of those costs. And then together, all of these things, and we recognize that through the long range financial plan that you'll deal with after this presentation, is that the town, as with many municipalities, is under significant fiscal pressure and significant pressure on your property tax and utility rates. What we want to do is ensure that the development charge rates are set at an appropriate level to fund the development related infrastructure. As a precursor to this, as you may get from my tone, is that we are looking at some sharp increases in the development charge rates. And we'll talk about that at the back end of the presentation. So moving on to my next slide. One of the other important changes that's occurred under the legislation, and this is one that isn't typically or or I don't think very beneficial to the municipalities, and I'm not even sure it is for the development industry. Previously, development charges were set and collected at the time of the issuance of the building permit. So someone came in for their building permit. They paid the development charge rate that was enforced at that time, and they gave the municipality the money. Now, what has happened is that when a developer makes an application save for a subdivision, the time at which they submit their complete application, whatever the development charge rates are at that point are frozen for them. And they, those are the rates that they will pay. But they actually don't pay them until they pull their permits, which can, and it can be up to two years that that happens. So you can imagine that development charge rates can change over that period of time and create additional fiscal pressures on the municipality. In addition to that, certain types and forms of development are now given the opportunity to pay the development charges over extended period of time. For example, rental housing and certain types of institutional uses pay their development charges in six installments over a five year period from the time of the issuance of the first permit. Nonprofit housing even extends out longer over 20 years. The development charge study process schematic is up before you. And I'm not going to get into the detail, but basically what we do is we say, how much is the town going to grow by over our planning horizons? And then we say, what are the growth related capital infrastructure needs to meet the increased needs arising from that development? Ties in with your capital plans, your master servicing plans, and your long range financial plan. And then there's some restrictions under the Development Charges Act and some rules that we have to adhere to. And we apply that to the capital program. And we say, what share of that program is related to development and fundable from development charges? That gives us the amount that we can recover through the rates. We apportion benefits to residential growth, non residential growth, and we calculate the development charge rates. It's obviously a more detailed process than that high level overview, but just to give you a sense of that. So moving on to the next slide. This is the first part of it, the development forecast itself. How much is the town going to grow by over the planning horizons? We have two planning horizons, one for the general services, 10 years, and we're going from 2021 to 2030. And then the engineered services have gone out to a longer planning horizon of 2036. Basically, we've extended the planning horizon, your previous target of 2031 to 2036 to reflect some of the slower rates of development that have occurred in the town over the last several years. Yet at the same time, over 10 years, we're saying you're going to add just over 4,000 households and reach a population just over 50,000 persons. By 2036, you will have added 5,700 new households and reaching that population of about 55,000 people. Non residentially, or hoping that you're going to add 3,500 new employees in the 10 years, and they will be accommodated in about 2,333 square meters of new non residential space. If you're more comfortable with square feet, you simply multiply it by a factor of about 10. So we're looking at about 2.4 million square feet of new non residential space in the 10 years. Out over the longer planning horizon, we've got more employment being added, adding about 5,900 over that roughly 15 year period, and adding just over 4.3 million square feet of new non residential space. So that's kind of the important driver of this. It's also the denominator of our rate calculations. Then just moving on to the next slide. Now I'm going to talk about the capital programs, and we've broken it down into two slides. One of the general services in that 10 year planning horizon. I know there's lots of numbers on here, and there's lots of detail behind it. But effectively, we've got a capital program for 10 years that is 132 million, a very big number. And through the rate calculations and the rates that I'm going to share with you in a moment, we are proposing to fund over 80 million of that from development charges, that 82.2 million that you see the second last line. I just want to talk about a couple of the other important things. Of the 132 million, there's about 16.7 million that's called a benefit to existing share or BTE short form. That's going to require tax funding, and for these services, obviously, it's going to fall to the property tax base. You have just shy of 20 million in the development charge reserve funds. You've already collected it. It'll apply against those projects. And then there's 13.8 million that is related to growth beyond our planning horizon, and it will be considered in subsequent development charge studies. You can also see we've given you a breakdown by the services. And right in the middle, the parks and recreation is the most significant component of the general services. And you can see it's about 93 million of the 132 million. And the red portion, or the largest share of that bar, is the piece that we're funding from development charges. Really significant parks and recreation capital program that we're endeavoring to fund through these rates. Then on the next slide, we have a summary of the engineering services, which once again are a very fundamental and critical part of your development charge funding. And for the services related to a highway, and that's the language in the act, which is really your roads program, approaching $200 million, of which 136.3 million we've identified as funding from development charges to 2036. We have a post period share of 25 million. We've identified that some of the industrial lands are likely going to be developed beyond 2036. So there's some associated infrastructure that we've moved out for funding beyond 2036. I think it's also important to note, and I probably should have done this on the development forecast slide. Obviously, as you're aware, the county is going through the municipal comprehensive review, which is redefining the growth that's going to occur in the county, and they're looking at to a 2051 horizon. That forecast and that work is is ongoing and doesn't inform this update and will in subsequent updates consider the longer planning horizons. And then with respect to the water wastewater services, you can see both of them are at about 160 million out for this 15 year planning horizon. And water services, we're funding approximately 130 million and wastewater 150 million. And once again, those post period amounts, we will fund those through subsequent development charge studies. But the 25 million under the roads program and a roughly 4 million on the wastewater will need to be funded from property taxes and utility rates. So there are some important ties into the long range financial plan with respect to those elements of the program. Now, just moving on. I'm going to now share with you the rates. Some of you may know what your current rates are, but before you ask, I'm going to share you, share those with you in a moment. You can see that the rate that we have calculated based upon that capital program and that amount of development results in a charge for a single and semi detached unit of just shy of $80,000, 59,969. And then for the other unit types, because the charges are levied based on what we call built form. And rows and multiples are typically what we would, many of us think of as townhouses. The charge is just over 66,000. And then the apartments, we break down into small and large apartments, large being two bedroom and more. And that charge is just over 50,000, 57,000 a unit. And then the apartment, the bachelor in one bedrooms are just over 36,000 a unit. We also have a special care or specialized unit rate. And and it's at 26,000. Some of you may be wondering, how do we differentiate the rates by built form? And what it is, it's based upon the average occupancies of those units, the number of persons that live in them. And we have data specific to the town that gives us the information on how many people live in a single detached town versus an apartment home. And we, it's our expectation, and most of the services are driven by the number of people that live in a home. So those that have more home, people living in them pay the higher charge. The single or semi detached unit, lower occupancy units place less demand and pay a lower development charge. And quickly, I'd also just want to identify, you can see where the big pieces of the pie are. And it's really about four services. It's the engineered services, the roads, the water and the sewer, which account for approximately, I'm sorry, I'm doing the math quickly in my head, 60, just under 80%, and then the parks and recreation piece is 22%. And the other services. And then the Parks and Recreation piece is twenty-two percent, and the other services add up to much smaller amounts. So it's really driven by those four key areas, and I very much want to stress with you that the engineering infrastructure in particular, development cannot proceed if it does not have water wastewater services and road services. And it fundamentally adds value to land and makes the land developable. And of course, all of us want to live in communities that provide a range of recreation opportunities. And so the Parks and Recreation is a fundamental component of meeting the needs of your residents, the future residents and the current ones. Just moving on to the next slide. Now, I think I've set you up for this a little bit, just about the change in the rate. So the current rate for a single or semi-detached unit is forty-four thousand three hundred and seventy-five. So the newly calculated draft rate of seventy-nine thousand nine sixty-nine is an increase of just over thirty-five thousand a unit. And if you show it on the percentage, it's quite significant, eighty percent increase in the charge. I'm going to talk in a little bit about some of the key things that are driving those changes in terms of the cost factors. But up above, you'll see in the general services are increasing by about ten thousand, a bulk of which is in your Parks and Recreation at about seventy-nine hundred a unit increase. And then the biggest part of the increase is twenty-five thousand a unit for your engineered services, with roads and related increasing by upwards of eleven thousand a unit, the water nine thousand, and the wastewater almost fifty-five hundred. So once again, those core pieces of infrastructure where we're seeing significant pressure on the cost of delivering those services is being reflected in these increased rates. And now just moving on to talk about the non-residential charges. Oh, sorry, I've got a comparison here for you. We'll stay with the residential for a moment. So what we have on here is a comparison of the development charge rates for a single detached unit in many of the central and south Simcoe municipalities, and then we've also added in some more northerly GTA municipalities. You can see that the lower yellow bar pointing in is showing your current development charge rate. And so you're sort of at the upper end of the middle grouping of the current Simcoe County development charges. These newly calculated rates would move you up into the very top of that group and puts you in the range at the lower end of some of the northern GTA municipalities like East Willimbury, Wichita, Stoville, Callahan, and King Township up there at the top. If I added places like Vaughan and Markham and Richmond Hill, they would be well north or well above any of those other charges. So I wasn't trying to include southern GTA municipalities. But in my opinion, some of those northern ones are accommodating the same kinds of growth and seeing the same kind of growth pressures that you are. As well, New Tecumseh is geographically quite a large municipality. I don't need to tell you that. And you have different centers of urban development occurring, plus important rural development, which makes infrastructure costs expensive because you've got so much linear infrastructure. So then just moving on to the next slide. I think, well, if you can go up a slide for a moment. The non-residential charge, we're actually proposing a slight change to the way that we calculate the rates. Those of you that have been involved in the process before, historically, and for as long as I've been working for the town and the mayor sort of alluded to this, it's actually more than twenty years now that I've had the fortune of working with yourselves. We have always calculated what we refer to as a uniform non-residential rate, and then the industrial charge was discounted by forty percent. So there is always a lower industrial with the objective of economic development-wise attracting new industrial uses into the community to reflect the important jobs that they provide and the tax benefits. What we are proposing for your consideration now is what we refer to as a differentiated calculated charge. Because that forty percent discount requires funding from non-GC sources, i.e. the property tax and utility rates. Many municipalities calculate the charges differently for industrial development and non-industrial because typically industrial development places a lower demand on many services when you compare it to employment. So we've done a different calculation, and I'm sorry for the long preamble there, but let's go into the rates now. So on the next slide, we have the calculated industrial rate, and it is two hundred and fifty dollars per square meter. And once again, if you're more comfortable with a square foot, this time you divide it by approximately ten. So it's about twenty-five dollars a square foot. And here you can see, we don't actually attribute Parks and Recreation benefit to non-residential. So the vast majority of the charge is for that core engineering infrastructure of roads, water, and wastewater services, accounting for upwards of ninety percent of the charge or more. And then just on the next slide. You can see the comparison with the charges, and I've got another comparison at the end of this piece on the non-residential. Your current non-residential charge for industrial is about a hundred and thirty-six dollars a square meter. The increase, once again, is just over eighty percent, or about a hundred and fourteen dollars a square meter. At this time, a hundred and five of that is related to the engineered services. I'm going to move on quickly to the non-industrial charge on the next slide. And you can see that it's significantly higher at four hundred and forty-two dollars per square meter. But once again, it's largely related to those engineered services. And on the next slide, we've got the comparison. So the current charge for non-industrial uses is two hundred and twenty-seven a square meter. This calculated charge is an increase of about two hundred and fourteen dollars or ninety-four percent. And this is using this calculated difference approach. I think I've got the next slide, which provides a bit of a better summary of that. I hope I haven't lost you in this change of the calculation, but what I'm trying to share with you now is the current rates, and if we calculated them in the same way, and then how we've calculated them under this new proposed approach. So the top line shows us the non-industrial charge currently is two hundred and twenty-seven dollars a square meter. The industrial charge, once again, is just discounted from that by forty percent, giving us the charge of a hundred and thirty-six dollars. So there's already a differential between the industrial and the non-industrial charge. If we'd gone forward with the way that we've calculated it in the past, a uniform non-residential charge, it would have worked out to the four hundred and twenty dollars and eighty-three cents a square meter that I'm showing under number two for the non-industrial. And then the forty percent discount would result in an industrial charge of about two hundred and fifty-two dollars a square meter. And then under section three here is just the summary of what I just shared with you. So now you can see the industrial charge, when we do this differentiated calculated, is basically the same as it would have been under the status quo approach, just over two hundred and fifty dollars a square meter. And then the non-industrial charge is slightly higher at the four forty-two. So a little bit higher than it would have been if we'd done it under the status quo, but not significantly. And this way, the important thing of number three again is that it's revenue neutral to the municipality. You're not discounting a charge and foregoing development charge revenue. And I think fiscally a prudent decision to go in this direction at this time. Then just moving on to some comparison slides. Once again, this is the industrial, and the lower one with the, with the gold arrow pointing in, or the yellow, is your current charge. And you can see that you're at the higher end of the Simcoe County municipalities. But there are indeed some that are in excess of that. As we move up to this newly calculated, you'd be near the top end of the Simcoe charges with a couple of the area rates in Innisville being higher. And then many of those northern GTA municipalities have higher charges again. And then just moving on to the next slide. This is the non-industrial or the, and we've selected retail here. Once again, your current charge is at the sort of upper end, but not the complete top of the Simcoe County. If we move towards this newer approach, you would be at the top end, but once again, well below some of the northern GTA municipalities. Just before I move off of the rate comparisons, and one thing I probably should have said at the beginning, doing rate comparisons is always tricky. One thing is, it's based upon the nature and the geography of the municipality. The other thing is that a number of these municipalities either will be doing updates soon or in the process, so the rates are changing all the time. So there's going to be fluctuations, and as I alluded to, there's only upward pressure on the calculated rates due to changes in costs. So just moving on to my next slide. So in my opinion, what is contributing to these rate increases? I think we are all surprised to see increases of eighty and ninety percent. The first thing is, the town has taken the time to do a more robust look at the department inventories. That's an important element on the general services in terms of establishing the ten-year historic service level. We've gone back with the departments. They've done an excellent job at quantifying and identifying all of the infrastructure somewhat related to your asset management planning exercise. We also reviewed all of the unit costs. What would it cost you to rebuild all of that infrastructure today? That had the effect of giving us higher funding envelopes and allowing us to fund a greater share of the capital programs moving forward, in particular in Parks and Recreation. The other really fundamentally important thing on the engineered services side, but also on the general service side, is that there has been significant upward pressure on the delivery of capital costs even before the pandemic pandemic got underway, and increasingly through the pandemic, construction costs have increased sharply. And that's what's being reflected in that. The town engaged outside engineering assistance to review all of the unit costs within the roads and related program, update all of the project costs. So even though the costs that we included in that last study back in twenty eighteen of the projects are largely unchanged, this base fundamental review and detailed review of the capital costs has shown that the cost of delivering that program is significantly higher than what we thought back in twenty eighteen. And that's the key fundamental driver to the increase in the rates that I just shared with you. And moving on to the next slide. I do want to share with you, there isn't a requirement for you as a council to implement those fully calculated rates. That's a maximum amount. You can implement something lower than that. I can't let you implement something higher, or at least I can't defend it before the tribunal. Remembering this bylaw is appealable to the O L T. But you can implement something lower, and there have been some options that municipalities have done in the past when looking at significant rate increases. You can phase in the charge over a period of time, and you can even choose to phase in only certain parts of it. Like you may say, that change in the industrial rate, that's too much to pass on to us right now. We want to phase it in over two or three or four years. You may be fine with the residential increases, or you can even choose different phase-in times and periods for that. The thing that I want to just share with you, and I'm sure Laurie will talk about it in the long-range financial, if you implement rates lower than what we calculated, you're foregoing development charge revenue. That revenue has to be offset somewhere, and it's going to be your property tax base and your utility rates. And so that needs to be considered in the long-range financial plan. The other thing, as I mentioned earlier, is that rates, development charge rates are now frozen at the time that someone makes an application. So if you pass a bylaw that's got a phase in, and next year the rates are lower, someone comes forward with an application for a large subdivision, those rates are frozen at that period of time, and effectively the phase-ins are extended for periods even beyond what you have because people are paying lower rates. Just wanted to bring that to your attention. The other point to make is that we can't discount, let's say you don't like the way the commercial charges went, you can't say, oh, I don't want that one increasing so much. Can we shift some of the burden to the residential growth? We can't shift it in that way. If you want to do something lower than what we've calculated, it has to be funded from non-development charge sources. So just on to my next slide. Which might be my final slide, just to talk about the process here. So we have been spending time working with your staff, and once again, thanks for all of their hard work, especially during these difficult times of getting things done. And we've been doing that started back at the beginning of the year through to July. We're here sharing with you the rates. We are writing the background study. What we also want to do is we want to engage with the development industry sooner rather than later, share with them a very similar package to what we just shared with you. Because as you can anticipate, they will be, have a reaction to those kinds of rate increases. We will then finalize the background study and get it released. And then there's a formal public process as well. We have to have a public meeting. We have to release a draft bylaw. We take into consideration all the comments we've received from the public, from council as well. We refine the study to the extent that we need, and then bring back a bylaw for your consideration sometime likely in November. So back to the chair, that's the end of my presentation. I don't know if you want to take, if I have time to take questions. I know I took a lot of time, but went through a lot of dense material as well.
All right, Councilman Saintsbury.
Thank you, worship. Through you to Mr. Benning. You compared us a lot to the York Region and Innisville, which is on Lake Simcoe Water, Wasaga Beach, which is on Georgian Bay, but they're not on the Collingwood Waterline. Our Collingwood Pipeline is on hold until the spring of twenty twenty-six. So if, I guess what I want you to clarify is if we are passing subdivisions with draft plan approval with the letter H on them, is that locked in at today's rates without going up to say eighty-four percent or whatever to the new D C charges? How does that work?
Mr. Benning?
Yes, through the chair, I think I would need to, to just to understand what that, if a complete application has been received, the way I read the legislation is the rates are frozen at that time. When council approves it, it then the two-year timeframe in which they have to pull the permit starts. I don't know what the H does to that, or I'd need to talk with legal counsel or further consider it. But there is, they have to pull it within two years, so that if they did something now, and it wasn't till twenty twenty-six that they're, they could pull actual permits on it, then they would be subject to the rates at the time they pulled their permits if that two-year window had elapsed.
We couldn't pull permits because the H is still on. That's the concern I have, because we got a fourth year and a bit hold. And some of these are already sitting there approved with the big letter H, which is goods on the shelf, it's money in the bank, but not to pay our debts right now.
Okay, thank you. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, worship. Through you, Mr. Benning. And the eighty thousand dollars for the single residential home, have you factored in yet what the county and school board increases will be, and if they are going to? I would assume they'll look for increases as well.
Yeah, the, the rates that I share with you include the current county charge. They don't include the education development charges. I think some of you may have been at the session with county council where I presented some new preliminary rates for their update as well, and and we're certainly looking at an increase in the charges there. It's a smaller part of the overall. But no, I haven't included that in it. I think through the mayor to the deputy mayor, that's a good point, and once we release the background study for the county, I think we will include the draft proposed rates on those rate comparisons.
Thank you. And you worship, just one more supplementary piece. You were talking about the industrial rates going up approximately one thirty to two fifty or two forty. My question, I guess it'd be for, you know, your opinion on this, is that everybody wants industry. We have a thousand acres because it creates local employment and brings jobs to the area and stuff. Is that something that traditionally other municipalities will phase in those development charges to encourage industry to relocate or to build in, in communities? Because I know it's pretty competitive out there when you're trying to attract new industries, and that's one of the things they look at. Have you, any advice from other municipalities on what their strategic plan may be?
Mr. Benny?
Yes, yes, through the mayor, very good question. You know, of all types of development, I generally think that residential growth and to some extent, commercial is not terribly sensitive to upfront capital costs. Data and analysis and reports that when you get into industrial uses, there can be a greater sensitivity to the full range of upfront capital costs, everything from the cost of acquiring land and other factors. And so there can be, and that's because people are willing to travel further for a good-paying job, like employment land jobs, than they are to go and get a cup of coffee or make their decisions about where they want to live. So outside of the GTA, there continues to be municipalities that either treat the industrial differently through discounts or treat the industrial differently through discounts or exemptions, not similar to what this council has done in the past. And yes, when faced with rate increases, they have considered focused phase in programs for the industrial charges. And that's something, that's why I shared that with you earlier.
Thank you.
Counselor Foster?
Thank you, Mayor Milton. Through you to Mr. Binning. We went through this process in twenty eighteen, and there was a lot of assumptions. And here we are three years later, two years before we're mandated to do this. Coming out with a whole lot of assumptions again, and I understand that's the nature of some of it. But charges like this from forty five thousand to eighty thousand for residential units, industrial and non-industrial. In the comparison chart, you use the communities that that we generally compare to. And then, and then when you show the 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 expected anticipated increases, you compare them to a whole set of different communities. My question to you is, I've not heard one word about what we possibly think the impact of of these sort of fees will be because we go from being moderate to the highest. Then we're anticipating, because it was commented by Ms. Bedford that I believe it was, everything is so intrinsically linked. This development charges, a long-range financial plan, all based on the hypothetical. So if if the if the opinions and the assumptions in this report are flawed, then everything is flawed and it becomes a domino effect. So I guess what I'm asking is where where is the security and the safety factors to give any of us any level of assurance that these speculative issues that we're talking about today are actually going to materialize? Because that's, to me, that's a huge concern. And when when the default seems to be, well, if you don't meet it with development charges, your poor taxpayers are paying the bill, and at a one percent increase of about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. If you fall short, three and a half million bucks, that's a ten percent increase, which I don't think anybody wants. So I know there's a lot in there, but if you could just sort of try to give me, and I'm sure the rest of council, a little sense of security that 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 what is the safety margin and all this that you've presented here?
Mr. Benny?
Yes, through the mayor. You know, it is, it's a challenging exercise. I want to stress again that even on the residential charges, the significant drivers here are your engineered infrastructure, your roads, your water and your wastewater. Those capital programs are established based on detailed engineering master servicing plans associated with needing to extend important linear infrastructure to allow those lands to open up to develop, to have those critical services. If you don't spend the money to have that engineering infrastructure in place, those lands just simply can't be developed. And and I know we've got other staff on here may want to speak to it, but we have taken a significant amount of time to review those capital programs. They're well established by engineers, and we've revised all of the costing. So I think those assumptions are all sound. I don't think it's terribly speculative. They're detailed, they're extensive, and it's just that the cost of constructing that infrastructure has increased so dramatically out over the last three years.
Supplementary, please. Supplementary, Councilor Foster.
I thank you, Mr. Binning. I appreciate that. But I would respectfully suggest that the same conversation happened in twenty eighteen, that these assumptions are sound, the engineering is sound, and here we are looking at a ninety four percent increase. So I would respectfully challenge you and disagree with the assertion that somehow something has changed from twenty eighteen and the previous survey behind that, that somehow today we're so much more cemented. I think it's, I think it's exactly the opposite. I think there's so much. Because if if we do go ahead and do the development, we move our our charges so high and the development doesn't come, there's been a four-year trajectory of of a significant depletion of our of our of our reserves. The subsequent tax base that comes two years after the fact. We are in a post-period now. We still haven't even hit the bottom. We're still not seeing big increases in 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 building permits, therefore subsequent taxation. So I don't believe the future looks overly bright, and I think to take on these charges and move from the middle of the pack to the most expensive is is going to have the opposite impact. And if that's the case, and that this council makes decisions based on that, I think we're in a, I think we're in a big pile of trouble. Respectfully, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor McClellan.
I think Counselor Saintsbury had her card up before me.
Counselor Saintsbury had a chance.
Oh, well, I had a supplementary based on Counselor Foster's question. It was very brief. Because we had the steel tariffs, and they've kind of gone away. We had that seventeen hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a thousand board feet for lumber down to four eighty now. Because we may have done some of this when everything was high and politics were doing whatever they were doing. Plus, with COVID, to me, inflation isn't spelled that way. It's spelled greed. So I just think that somehow we're in a flux where we'll end up at L P A. And because we have the big letter H, we can't provide the services because we don't have the water. Then we'll get challenged. So I think it's good to know, it's good for long range, but it's premature to 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 tell the developers, this is how it's going to be when we can't even give them the water. That is not their fault. Thank you.
Lori Bedford, could you wish to say something?
If Counselor McClellan is last comment, then I'll be happy to go after her because I'll just sort of wrap this up, then, you know, in response to some of these comments.
Right, Counselor McClellan?
Thank you, worship. I think development charges, we've always been in the middle of the road. And I don't think it's fair to ask the current residents to make up the difference because a phrase that's often touted in in municipal council meetings is growth pays for growth. And this report shows and explicitly explains that it does not. And that there is always going to be a portion of the taxpayers footing the bill. So I absolutely think we should be on the high end of D C charges. We're right on the cusp of the G T A. Developers aren't simply just going to disappear. Everyone wants to develop here. And they will, regardless of what D C charges are. And I absolutely think they should be high, because I don't think that residents should be putting the bill to have new development and with our engineering and our our services. It's expensive. And if we need new roads and new infrastructure under the roads because of a certain development that's going in, I mean, they should put the bill a hundred percent. I know that will never happen, but so we should absolutely be on the highest end. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Jeb and then Counselor Foster.
Thank you, worship. I was just going through the report that we were given. And the one slide that was presented by Mr. Binning is different than what I have about the non-residential other than industrial. It showed four hundred and forty something, and I have four hundred and thirteen. So if we could get maybe an update cut from what we have in our package.
Okay, Mr. Benny? Mark, can we go back to that slide, please? We're going back to that slide, Mr. Benny.
It just through the mayor, it may be an issue that Ms. Bedford and I just need to review and get back to council on. I'm I'm not sure about the discrepancy off the top.
Yeah, that would be fine. It was page for Ms. Bedford's. It was page fifteen of three thirty-three is different than what was on the screen. So I just like an update. That's all. Thank you.
And Counselor Foster?
Thank you, Mayor Mill. I just want to clarify one point, and maybe I'm off in my assumption, but to Counselor McClellan's comment about about the cost of development charges. If I was in any way suggesting that I I was looking to have the charges reduced, I hope that was not her implication. So I'll let her clarify when she has a chance to speak. But if, in fact, what I'm concerned about is that we see multiple reports for this council all the time on a on a number of different things. We're going to talk about transit and all sorts of different things. And everybody who comes to this council, who makes a presentation, makes assumptions. And at the end of the day, when those assumptions don't materialize, the ten people on the screen or the nine plus one missing end up holding the bag and sitting trying to understand what happened. Well, why didn't it work out with the hundreds of thousands of dollars we paid in consultants' charges? So what I'm asking is, and what I'd like to understand is, first of all, not just to be critical, what are the other options? What happens if the assumptions in this report, which clearly in previous reports have not materialized, do not work out? What assurance does this council have that we are not going back to the taxpayers to say, oh, thanks, but here's another ten percent increase? That's what I'm looking to achieve. So if Mr. Binning could address that, or or Ms. Bedford could address it, I think that's a huge concern, and I don't think we ask it often enough when we sit here and get these reports. So if someone could address that, I would appreciate it, please.
Mr. Benny?
Just through the mayor, I'm not sure that I have much to add to to my previous comments. I I have confidence in working with your staff and with the engineers that they were retained to review and update the costs that are fundamental to the capital program and the rates that I just shared with you. Ms. Bedford may have some additional comments.
Thank you. Everyone's had a question they're going to ask Ms. Bedford to some summarize it up, and then we'll move on.
And through your worship to council, and in response, particularly to Council, Counselor Foster's comments. One thing I'd like to point out is that in the past, and I can give you a very tangible example. The a previous D C study had the Tottenham Transmission Name in it around, and I'm sure Rick will be cringing right now because I'm going from memory, but had the project in around, we'll say the seven million dollar mark. And if you can recall, when the project came in to actually be initiated, it was coming in at sixteen million. Now, that was a combination, I believe, both pricing and scope. The scope of it had changed as well. The problem is when you're developing some of these projects, I mean, you 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 are doing them. You are doing a plan over a ten-year and in the engineering case in this in this plan over a fifteen-year cycle. So it is difficult to know exactly what it is you're trying to build fifteen years from now and 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 give an exact estimate of price fifteen years from now as well. But we did go to an extra effort this year, and what that was is we hired a consultant, a pricing consultant, a cost consultant to come in and look at all the higher valued projects. So we have done what I feel is to be a very stringent review of our capital projects. And we've added another element to it as well. I mean, we did add an element of asset management. So we've been looking at our assets, really, we've had the staff have been having talks about assets very extensively for the last year because of all of these elements coming together. And one of the reasons we've come to council early, earlier than we needed to for this D C study is because we're finding that all of the pricing was undervalued. And so I think it's a safe assumption to say the pricing is undervalued, and we're absolutely going in the right direction. And we miss the boat. If we don't do the study and and create a change to our our values, then we miss the boat because any development that occurs between now and and, you know, when we do the, if we waited for the five years, then we are selling our services at a discounted rate, and we know those rates are not correct because, for example, we did not include a sixteen million dollar, you know, Tottenham Pipeline into our original D C plan, the the one that's three years old. So I would also like to just ask Craig, maybe I'm putting you on the spot a little bit, but do you feel that the exercise you saw our staff go through was as competent as any of the other municipalities that you've been working with? Did you feel there were any gaps that where there would be room where we could enhance our our estimates?
Mr. Benny?
Yes, through the mayor. I mean, I think, as I've tried to indicate, I think this was even a more rigorous process than the one that we did in twenty eighteen. I think Rick and his team, together with the engineering cost consultants, took a lot of time. We went through the program. I went through it numerous times. I highlighted and identified things where I was seeing changes. We went back and forth to make sure that there was rigor in those things. You know, there there could be a reason to take a pause again to see if any of the more recent adjustments to some cost components like the wood might have an impact on some of those pricing. And I'm sure that we could do that over the coming months. And if we feel that there is some material change there, that we could reflect that in the final set of rates and bylaw that we brought to council.
Counselor Foster?
Thank you, Mayor Milton. Thank you to Lori Bedford and Mr. Binning. Somehow it seems to me as if there is, there's a little bit of defense here that somehow this is a criticism of the staff. I have the ultimate faith in the staff, especially Mr. Vatri. He's he's served this municipality, municipality honorably for a long time, and I think he's highly respected by everybody, myself included. So it is in no way an indication of the the amount of work or the amount of diligence that has been done by the staff. What I simply want to draw attention to is that we need to recover these costs. I have no debate with the cost, whether they're seventy-nine thousand or eighty-nine thousand dollars. I just want to look ahead and say, if the if all of the hard work that has gone into this report does not materialize, i.e. the developers don't come, we don't have development, and then somehow we find ourselves in the position that we are the highest priced municipality to deal in. And unlike the assertions of some other counselors that the developers will come, I'm not so sure that they will if they have other options. So I think to move ahead on that premise is just extremely dangerous. So I just want to draw attention to the fact that this is highly speculative, despite all of the work involved. And what sort of, I think anybody prudent, whether you're doing something personally in in business or in politics, what level of comfort do we have that if we start to build infrastructure in the anticipation that they're coming and they don't come, what's our bailout plan? And maybe that's more of a direct question.
And so can I address that again? Because what that what what I'm now interpreting your question to be is different than what I interpreted it the first time. I we staff are on the same page, and when I get into the long-term financial plan, we're going to have an opportunity to talk about that because you know, we're we're in an interesting, challenging precipice here. And we will talk about that today. I do have that on the agenda to discuss.
Thank you. That's why I clarified. I I could see it going a different direction, which was not my intention.
Okay.
Okay, council, just, I'm trying to move everything. I want to be out of here by five o'clock afternoon. So if there's any questions you didn't get a chance to answer, Ms. Bedford sent her an email or Mr. Binning, and we'll clear it up. I have a motion and I'd like to read that reported in twenty twenty-one dash two-three be received and for that the policy incentive discounting industrial and non-industrial D C rates outlined within the attachment one. To report in twenty twenty-one dash two-three and identified as one to three be replaced with a model which calculates differential industrial and non-industrial rates based on shared employment and incorporate within the development charges, background study and draft bylaw. And for that the draft development charges rate is illustrated within the presentation provided by handsome consultant limited be incorporated within the development charge, background study and draft bylaw. Mover and secondary, please. Who becomes to Harris McIntyre, second by Councilor Beatty, all in favor? Oppose, if any? Right, let's move to move to W S two. And at this time, go back to Ms. Bedford to to introduce the speaker.
So through your worship to all of council, I'd like to introduce Arun Chalil. He's our manager, and if you recall, not that long ago, I'd say within the last six months, you were all introduced to the new corporate asset management plan, which was a consolidation for the entire organization. And then the next step from there was to refine each of the asset management plans to specifically refer to service areas. So attached, you'll find some asset management plans, detailed ones, and he's going to do a synopsis for you of of the details. And really, his major theme is the sustainability of our assets. So I'll introduce Arun, and his presentation is about fifteen minutes long.
Okay, thank you. Haru?
Yeah. I would like Bob to show my presentation.
Mark?
Through your worship, yes, I'm just bringing it up.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Uh, next slide. Good afternoon, your worship, uh, Mayor No, uh, Deputy Mayor, Council, Staff and Audience. I'm Arun Chalil, Manager of Corporate Assets at the Town of New Tukemsee. I am pleased to present to all of you today our service area asset management plan for the core infrastructure. The objectives of this presentation is to understand the pressures faced by the town with regards to funding of its services. How do we prioritize one service over other? Understanding the condition, age, failure rates and other factors that affect our assets. Understanding how much it costs to sustain a service. For example, the cost to build, rehabilitate, operate and maintain a roads or a bridge or water service. Understanding the lifecycle cost of a service area. For example, what is the lifecycle cost of water? Waste water, roads or stormwater, which service area is critical to the stakeholders? Which service area is currently sustainable and which is not? Understanding the data limitations that we currently have and how we are going to meet challenges on updating and refining our data. Service area asset management plan is a granular version of the corporate asset management plan. And this presentation focuses on our core infrastructure in the town. Next slide, please. The Ontario Regulation 588 slash 17 has mandated the following timelines for 2021, which is focused on core infrastructure for the town. Transportation, water, wastewater and stormwater. All inventories are in GIS, which is the central repository. I have highlighted them in red, so you can see that. Levels of service has been discussed with public works and captured as per the regulation. In this presentation, the asset management will provide details on cost to maintain current levels of service for the next 10 years. Next slide, please. This is an asset management questionnaire that Ministry of Infrastructure generally sends to all the municipalities to fill in for grant applications. I got this from the Parks and Recreation and Engineering to fill in for grants that they applied early this year. As you noticed, we are in the threshold of completing the last two questions in the questionnaire in today's presentation, which is to do with the lifecycle costing and how sustainable is the service we provide to the residents or customers? Next slide. What does this regulation mean to the council? Council represents the needs of the community and stakeholders. They are involved in allocation of resources to meet budget and provide services while managing risk. They must ensure that services provided are sustainable and they are responsible for defining service levels to the community. Next couple of slides, I will talk about each services. Water service, next slide. Water, this table focuses on customer levels of service, customer expectations, et cetera. The table to the left is the service level for water that has been stipulated in the regulation. The maps to the right are our description of water services at the town with some performance measures built already. The regulation has focused on service levels like displaying a map on water connectivity, fire routes, et cetera for public. In addition to this, the public works with asset management have identified additional levels of service and performance measures for the town. Next slide. Technical levels of service for water. These levels of service is for staff, council, regulatory bodies and other levels of government. This levels, the, this level of service has more numerical performance measures like percentages, values that we currently measures and will have future benchmark our targets in 2024. Next slide, please. Water is a rate based and not tax based and hence it was important we capture the revenue based on our water rates for the next 10 years. Rate based revenue for the next 10 years is 94 million. DC revenue and expenditure was, is equal and does not skew the overall funding gap since growth pays for growth and any revenue is matched with the corresponding growth expenditure. The asset replacement, which is non-growth, is 60.43 million and the operation and maintenance expenditure is 75.73 million. It is important to note that we also consider the operation and maintenance expenditure that may be a result of growth. The funding gap or infrastructure gap is 42 million for water. Most of the assets in the water and wastewater services are age based and condition assessment is required. There is also data gap in the two service area that may change these values. Next slide, please. This is a tabular representation of the lifecycle cost for water services. Next slide. Next slide. Waste water service, the customer levels of service, customer levels of service. This table represents the customer levels of service for wastewater. The levels of service requires us to provide description on our images of sanitary sewer connectivity in the town and details and measures related to the number of order complaints, complaints on saver blocks, et cetera. Next slide. This focuses on technical levels of service. The regulation has identified additional levels of service like minimum interruptions, percentage of properties connected to municipal wastewater system, affluent violations per year, condition of assets and silver some, silver pumping stations with standby power, et cetera in the town. Next slide. Like water, wastewater is a rate based and rate based revenue for the next 10 years is 132.7 million. Again, the DC revenue and expenditure is equal and does not skew the overall funding gap. The asset replacement, which is non-growth, is 46.1 million and the operation and maintenance expenditure is 98 million. The funding gap for wastewater is 11.5 million. Like water, wastewater is age based and has significant buried and vertical infrastructure which do not have condition. As we move into condition and close the data gaps, this funding gap will grow. Next slide. Sorry. This is a tabular representation of the lifecycle cost for wastewater. Next slide. Again, next slide. Roads. This table is, to the left is the service level for roads that has been mentioned in the regulation. The map to the right provides a road connectivity and condition in the town. A high percentage of green color is an indication that our roads are in good condition with few red and orange. This explains that the roads are well funded, but with the growth in the town and conversion of gravel roads to paved roads, the gap will significantly increase as more investment is required. Next slide, please. The technical levels of service for road is focused on road connectivity in the town and illustrations of arterial collector and local roads in the town. This is more useful for the staff, council, you know, and other levels of government. Next slide. Roads, which is part of transportation services are tax based and 10-year budget for roads based on an annual investment of dollar 10.04 million, which includes the capital and operating expenditure. The 10-year investment will come to 100.4 million. The road rehabilitation and resurfacing for the next 10 years will be a capital investment of 46.6 million, which also includes some town roads that will be funded by DC as for the roads need study. Annual operations and maintenance cost for roads is 5.87 million and in a 10-year cost will be 58.7 million. The activities on the bottom left are the operation and maintenance activities that is related to roads. The funding gap or infrastructure gap for roads is 7 million, which indicates that roads have been well funded over the years, but will require investment as more roads get converted to paved roads and more roads get assumed by the town over the years. Next slide. This is a tabular representation of the lifecycle cost for roads. Next slide. Next slide. Trans, this is road structures, this is a customer and technical levels of service for road structures and right of ways. When I say road structures, it is the bridges and culverts and right of ways include sidewalks, streetlights, traffic signals, signs. The table to the left is the service level for bridges and culverts that was mentioned in the regulation. The speedometer came from the structure study and indicates the condition of assets in the town. More culverts are in good condition than bridges. Next slide, please. One of the challenges in bridges and culverts is that the structure study does not provide a suggested annual investment for structures. The engineering does not have a defined annual investment on the structures and historically simply budgeted from year to year, whatever structure project value noted in the study. So considering the operation and maintenance for right of ways in the roads budget, which is about 1.8 million annually and an average annual investment of 1.5 million as capital works budget for the structures, I came up with a total budget of 33 million. The structure study identified about 32.3 million of capital rehabilitation and replacement for bridges and culverts and 18 million for operation and maintenance for right of ways. The table to the bottom left are activities associated with the operations and maintenance of structures and right of ways. The funding gap is 17.3 million for this service area, which is mainly gap related to the capital investment in bridges and culverts to keep them in a state of good repair. Next slide, please. This is a tabular representation of lifecycle cost for structures and right of ways. Next slide. Next slide. Stormwater services include storm collectors, storm ponds, catch basins and municipal drains. The table to the left is the service level for stormwater that was mentioned in the regulation. The drainage study provided a preliminary flood risk assessment for riverine flooding for Aliston, Beaton and Tottenham. And the maps to the right came from the drainage study. The metrics below was used as performance measures for stormwater and this again came from the drainage study. Next slide. Stormwater forecast for renewal and operations and maintenance expenditure is 9 million over a period of 10 years, which is which is 0.88 million on average per year. The proposed operations, maintenance and renewal funding is 0.7 million based on a five-year average. There is funding shortfall or infrastructure gap in stormwater, which is about 1.86 million. With the increase in stormwater assets in the town, there will be increase in expenditure and aging of these assets. Assets will contribute to the increase in infrastructure gap. Stormwater assets have grants from organizations like Federation of Canadian Municipalities and AMO that is linked to climate change and it is tied to this service area and facilities. Investment in this categories, category will help us utilize grants on climate change. Next slide. This is a tabular representation of lifecycle cost for stormwater. Next slide. For this service area, and we have tied the following studies, master plans, budget and long-range financial plan to ensure that it is asset management planned is, is integrated with the other documents in the town. Roads need study was significantly used in the roads asset management plan. Municipal structure, inventory and inspection report for all the bridges and culverts, drainage study for the stormwater, drinking quality management system reports and water distribution and storage plan for water services and the wastewater operational plan for wastewater. In addition to these uh, the, these studies, we also use the budget and long-range financial plan to come up with the service area asset management plan. Next slide, please. To the left are our upcoming objectives of asset management in the town and to the right are some of the timelines that we intend to pursue in the next few years. Our next steps is to have asset management plans for parks and recreation, facilities, fleet and fire and improve data of all assets. Discuss and develop parameters on condition and risks with business area and continue to revise our models in acidic predictor, decision-making tool. Next slide. So to wrap up how we are going to meet the objectives mentioned earlier, we are hoping to achieve a good understanding of our current levels of surveys and work on our target levels of surveys by new timeline, which is 2025. We would like to perform condition assessment on assets using data in city works and any consultant studies which will help us move from age-based to condition-based and further our goal in prioritization of assets. We are hoping to understand the failure rates of equipment components within the facility using city works like inspections, work orders, which will help us understand asset, asset performance. Our objective is to have our staff update us of any impending failure, which will help us in understanding breakdowns and tracking PMs through city works. We also hope to make the management aware about the lifecycle cost to sustain a service in the town, which are cost to rebuild, cost to build, rehabilitate, operate and maintain a town asset, which will further the knowledge of understanding how sustainable is a service to the town. Next slide. Hope you enjoyed my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Haru. Questions, Haru? Uh, Councillors, thank you.
Thank you, your worship, through you to Haru. Um, it says on water, wastewater, there are supposed to be revenue neutral budgets. It's, and we pay a certain amount, we have DCs for a certain amount and we have user pay system for differences. When we did the new development charges that we just dealt with before this report, was the increase of the 84 to 90 whatever percent factored in so it, so that the gap would not be so large? I have two questions, your worship, but that's my first one.
Okay. Haru?
Yeah, so just to, through you, Mayor Mel, to councillor Sinsbury, uh, we, I haven't taken the DC, complete DC information like there is, I only took the first three years of DC growth and I matched it with the DC revenue with the DC expenditure. I haven't taken the full 10 or 15 years what was mentioned in the DC study, but yes, I did take that into account of the lifecycle cost, but it's not skewed.
So you did mention one of your charts that you were going to look at priorities, you were going to maybe review which um, projects can be moved forward, which can be deferred for a small period of time and others for a longer period of time because of the DCs not coming in due to the common with water issue. And, and so I think when staff bring back this, these reports to the committee of the whole, that we need to have a paragraph in there from staff related to mitigation measures to eliminate these funding gaps. Like if we approve this report and we got all these funding gaps, that's my concern. Are we approving that with the funding gaps or is there still another step by going through committee to council to budget session?
Uh, I will, I'll ask Laurie to answer this question.
Because I was looking at the recommendation. I was looking at the recommendation.
Um, through your worship to council, um, some, just to put this into perspective, there is a difference between asset management there is a difference between asset management and development charge. So asset management primarily refers to the assets we already own. They're already, you know, we are already seeing them, touching them, feeling them. And we have to make sure that we can sustain them and maintain them. So when and you know, when a rune, so when if you recall that little diagram I did earlier where there were the three circles, the the part that a runes presenting right now are the assets that we already own. And we're talking about wear and tear and replacement. When you know, you asked the question about the DCs, the only reason he even brought the DC conversation even into his presentation today was because time goes so quickly that if we're doing a DC project next year, then we own it and we need to maintain it. And an interesting concept, or I'll remind you again, that recently council approved a policy, a reserve policy. And in the reserve policy, it indicated that in order to be sustainable, in order to do good stewardship with the acquisition of our assets, that we should, I'll say in theory, but policy said that we should fund fifty percent of the amortization of a new asset. And you know, in recently, so one that comes to my mind, it's fresh. We are acquiring new administration or sorry, town hall. The town hall is approximately twenty million dollars. So we should be putting, and say the life of that town hall is forty years. We should be putting five hundred thousand dollars away a year. I think that's the math. Anyway, that was intended to be the math. Five hundred thousand dollars a year away into a reserve in order to be in a position at the end of that forty years to refund, you know, a replacement for a for a town hall. So we are setting some procedures in place to help the town sustain their investment in assets. You know, the council has shown good stewardship and putting that half a percent away towards asset management. I may come back this year asking for more than half a percent because you're seeing some additional funding gaps. No municipality is in a position to say they have no funding gaps. It's just, you know, it's it's something we have to strive to do the best we can. Again, we are in a good position because you're seeing good quality information indicating that we are aware of our funding gaps. We're aware of the operating costs to maintain our assets. And so at least we know what we know as opposed to working in the dark. So we're absolutely headed in the right direction and we're doing as much as we can, although in smaller steps. I hope that answers your question, Council Sings.
Thank you. Any other questions? The motion then that that the report of CS twenty twenty one dash zero four be received and further that the service area assessment management plan presentation be received and further that the individual service area asset management plans for roads included as attachment number two, storm waters included as attachment number three and road structures of rights of ways included as attachment number four to report of CS twenty twenty one oh four. All core infrastructure of the town and duty comes to be approved. Moved by Deputy Mayor, second by Council chap, all favor. Thank you. Laurie, did you want to introduce yourself?
Sure. Could I make a suggestion that we take a very small break? I can assure you, Mr. Mayor, that we will be out of here before we even out on a limb and say, well, four o'clock, but we scheduled for three thirty and I'm targeting three thirty. So okay, take but but a short break, whatever you think is reasonable, five to ten minutes.